Feeding to order, this is the November 2nd, 2023, meeting of the Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Chair Clow.
Absent in excuse.
Hello?
Chair Clow is absent in excuse.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Lawrence. Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Morondo.
Melissa, Commissioner Morondo is here.
I see him now. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Reland. Thank you. And Commissioner Smith. Thank you. I'm kind of having a hard time hearing, so if you guys could really speak into your microphones, thank you.
Mr. Smith is absent but excused.
Thank you.
And then we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Faulkner, would you lead us in the pledge? Okay, next we have approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff?
Chair Lawrence, there are no changes from staff. Thank you.
Are there any changes from the commission?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Is your microphone on? Thank you. Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Chair, if I may, I just want to point out to everybody in the room, since Melissa's online today, make sure you're speaking clearly and directly into your microphone and make sure it's on when you speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the consent items. The consent items are listed on the agenda at item seven. Staff, is there anything to say about any of the consented items?
No, Chair Lawrence, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. And those materials were all in our package. Anything from the commission or can I have a motion? Motion to approve consent, Callard, move.
Second.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
And Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
And next we have the approval of minutes. First, we have the minutes of September 7th, 2023. Were there any changes from staff?
Chair Lawrence, no changes from staff. Thank you.
Any changes from the commission? If not, can I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Okay, next we have the minutes of September 21st, 2023. Were there any changes from staff?
Chair Lawrence, no changes. Thank you.
Any changes from the commission? And if not, can I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Reland? Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes, I'll state that I was absent that day, but I have reviewed the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Right, we're making our way through everyone. Next, we have approval of the findings and conclusions. The findings and conclusions from case 2023-6961, Villas de Las Soleris, Unit 3, Final Development Plan. Were there any changes from staff? No, no changes. Any changes from the commission? And if not, can I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Next, we have the findings and conclusions for case 2023-6962, Villas de Las Soleris, Unit 3, Final Subdivision Plat. Any changes from staff? No changes. Changes from the commission? And if not, can I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
And then we have the findings and conclusions for case 2023-7081, 123 and 135, Grant Avenue, Varianz, to subsection 14-8.6 C2B. Any changes from staff? Yes. Any changes from the commission? And if not, can I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you. That then takes us to item nine on the agenda, new business, and cases 2023-6392 and 2023-6491 for 5407 Beckner Road. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Escobett.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is kind of a unique project that we're putting forward. We've never done both preliminary and final plat on the same ticket. They've always been separate. So this is sort of a trial. I'm not sure if we'll continue it. We're still evaluating whether there's a benefit or not. But this is the, this is a trial version of that. So that's why you're seeing both preliminary and final on the same agenda for the same case. Both the preliminary plat and the final plat are appealable. That may be one of the reasons why they've always been separated. This is such a minor case, it didn't seem like that was reasonable for either the staff time or the applicant. Right. So this is case 2023, 6392, 5407 Beckner Road, Preliminary Serial Subdivision, Jenkins Gavin Agent for AMFPV Beckner LLC. And they are the owner, and they request preliminary serial subdivision approval for SFCC 1987, Section 1437, subdivision of land to divide Lot 1A, Phase 2 of 5201 Beckner Road. And that's the project consisting of 11.18 acres within the Los Soleris Master Plan for an eight-lot subdivision. The property is Zone C2 and within the suburban and archaeological review district. Second case is 2023, 6491, 5407 Beckner Road, Final Serial Subdivision, and all of the same line items. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary subdivision plat, case 2023, 6392, and final subdivision plat, case 2023, 6391, with conditions of approval and technical corrections outlined in this report. And those have been, the conditions have been compiled in Table 1, Section 2, Conditions of Approval. There are two motions required for these cases, adopt or deny the preliminary subdivision plat for case 2023, 6392, subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff, and approve or deny the final subdivision plat for case 2023, 6391, subject to the same conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff. This is a picture of the existing subdivision as it, as it was approved by the Planning Commission, I believe in 2020. Was it 2020? Yeah. In this case, you did approve a development plan which included a large apartment complex that is under construction currently. And there were five lots total, four of those lots were in Phase 2. The applicant is requesting to add three more lots to Phase 2 for a total of an eight-lot subdivision as a serial subdivision which includes Lot 1. The applicant will be continuing the trail of the Los Soleris Master Plan which runs along the south border of Track 1 and the west property line along Serios Road of Track 1. The preliminary subdivision plat approval criteria, 1437C, were all complied with by the applicant. And as a direct result, the final plat does match the preliminary plat as it was presented. And that does end my presentation. Again, as I said, this is a pretty...
Thank you, Mr. Escobett. Are there any clarifying questions from any commissioners or staff at this time? Commissioner Lucero first.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Escobett. So the bike master plan, which is finished in 2019, indicates that in this area, and it says so on the map here on Attachment C, that you can connect to an existing pedestrian underpass. And I'm glad to see it on the map because, you know, sometimes the bike master plan isn't incorporated into new developments, at least at a rate that I'd like to see. I wonder if you could speak a little bit to the nature of this development in regard to this pedestrian underpass, which I believe is buried at the moment. What's the status of that underpass and how is this development going to incorporate access to that pass eventually?
You know, I didn't, since that pass is a little bit north of this property, I really didn't include that in my review, other than just the fact that they were going to continue that trail pathway that the master plan identified as it was approved by the governing body along the southern and western border of Track 1, which includes Phases 1 and 2. I'm assuming that as Track 2 develops and/or A7 up at the top, as, as they develop, that they will be incorporating any kind of improvements that are necessary since most of the time we capture the development and trails that are on those lots associated with that particular development as opposed to trying to force a developer to develop somebody else's property.
Gotcha. I see, and this is the map that I'm talking about right here. So kind of at the top end of the Arroyo there, there is a path that already starts, but then it just kind of deadends, and it looks like it's going to eventually go all the way to where it says, connect to a pedestrian underpass. I'm just, you know, voicing my concern that, you know, that not get overbuilt or ignored as this gets developed.
And we did talk about this pathway along the north end of the Arroyo. And it was pointed out to us that this is on Track 2 and Track 3's property and not on Track 1, in which case that will fall on Track 2 and 3 to develop when they come in.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Faulkner?
So one of the, one of the concerns I have about, this is more about the process that you're using. If, if we had done the preliminary and then the final separately, there would have been two public hearings, yes?
Yes.
So that's the only concern I have about that. About the process you're using, is that it's eliminated one opportunity for the public to address. And I totally understand, this is not a case where we're going to have a lot of public turnout, but there is the precedent, right? And so that's one of the primary concerns I have. It's not about the project, but the process. More of a comment than a question.
Anything else from any commissioners? Commissioner Miranda?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawrence. Could you perhaps speak to specifically why you decided to take both through in one in this case? Well, there's a couple of reasons that were, you know, put forward when I presented the case to Maggie. One is we're very light on staff. Resource time is very important to us. We're heavy on caseload right now. So moving forward with an application that is particularly more than, it's pretty much a rubber stamp because nothing ever changes from the preliminary to the final, but it does add another meeting to the mix. I'm not quite sure why the city implemented that. At the county, it was always preliminary and final on the same ticket when I was with the county. And only if the applicant failed to meet certain criteria did the staff take it forward with a preliminary only. When, when everything is going to match, it's just a hard item to move forward. You have to prepare the case, you have to post the item, you have to present it on the agenda. There's a lot of resources available for a rubber stamp. While it does present an appealable item, and it is a second public hearing, it does add a lot of resource time on a very limited resource department. Thank you. Just as a statement from my own feeling on it, I, I think it would make a lot of sense that when it's purely administrative rubber stamp, that this be done in the future, I think it makes a lot of sense. The slippery slope is always an issue, but I think that's very the point, that if it's truly, there's truly not a substantial change, then to me, this makes a lot of sense. The applicant has agreed with all of the conditions. Again, we were dealing with three lots on a total of an eight-lot subdivision. It seemed like a good choice. But again, again, this is an experimental process. It will be up to Jason and Maggie to weigh the pros and cons as to whether this should happen again or not.
Vice Chair. I'd just like to speak for a second on this. So I just want to clarify, number one, I'm not really keen on the term rubber stamp because this, these projects are definitely heavily reviewed, very thoroughly reviewed. I just want to make that clear. I think when people are referring to rubber stamp, it's just to the fact that there's no valid reason for these to come separately. They're... Yeah, there's no conditions that are going to be, there's no conditions of concern that need to happen with a, with a follow-up final development plan. Maggie, did you want to add anything? And also, I just wanted to say, you know, this is within the Land Use Director's prerogative to make, to make the choice. And we would, and to answer Commissioner Faulkner's concern, you know, we definitely think about all the potential aspects whenever we make this determination, whether to come forward with, you know, separate cases or one case.
Thank you, Director Cluke. Are there any other questions for staff before we move on to the applicant presentation? Commissioner Reland?
What was the reason for increasing more lots?
You have to ask the applicant. I'm afraid that's a choice made by their client.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Escobett. If the applicant would like to come forward and speak on this, these requests? Ready to be sworn in?
Yes, you do, Jennifer. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Jenkins, 130 Grant Avenue, Suite 101, Santa Fe. Good evening, commissioners.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Jenkins with Jenkins Gavin, here on behalf of the 5407 Beckner Road Project and request for preliminary and final subdivision plat approval. So I have a lot of imagery and a lot of things that I could share with you. And so I'm going to give a little bit of background, and then when it's time to stand for questions, we can focus on whatever you may want to discuss or want a little further information about, and I can pull, pull that imagery up, you know, as, as needed. So in 2020, this project was approved as a two-phase project. The first phase is an apartment community that is currently under construction. The second phase are, were four commercial lots, three of which, which front on Serios Road, and one that was kind of more internal. And as the apartment community got underway, got under construction, the owners kind of pivoted to the commercial parcels and, and started the marketing effort for those. And the feedback that we received basically from the market is our lots were just too big. You know, the, the users that we were looking at were like, we don't need two acres, we need one acre. And so we revisited the site plan, so it was really a market-driven decision to decrease the, the size of lots, which therefore increased the number of lots. So we went from four commercial lots to seven. And, but the backbone infrastructure and all those elements really remained significantly, you know, unchanged. It was just a matter of reconfiguring, reconfiguring the real estate to better respond to the market demand. So again, appreciate working with staff. They've been great. Appreciate their support. We are in agreement with all conditions of approval, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Reland?
Your market analysis, what kind of companies are we talking about?
You know, we're, we're looking at primarily retail and restaurant-type users. Nothing has been, you know, we, we really can't finalize transactions until we have a subdivision plat, right? So it's a, it's a sequential process, but the owners are in, in communication with a variety of users. You know, food, like I said, restaurants, restaurants, coffee, retail, those, those types of, potentially maybe even a hotel on the site. So we're in dialogue, and so once we get the plat recorded, then we can actually create purchase and sale agreements, and then those individual projects will start to move forward. But we do expect, the developers are going to move forward with the backbone infrastructure right away. They'll be, you know, building the access road and utilities and all of that. And, and then we should see some vertical construction out there, hopefully, you know, next summer.
Any other questions from the commission for the applicant at this time? Okay, being none, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here in the room who would like to speak on these requests, please come forward. Being none, Ms. Moore, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to give anyone who is listening on Zoom, if they're interested in... Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to give anyone who is listening on Zoom, if they're interested in participating in public comment, please raise your hand now. I do not see any hands raised on Zoom. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. If there is no additional public comment, then I'm going to close the public hearing and open it to any discussion or other comments or questions from any commissioners. Commissioner Morondo? There are no, if there is no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion. And if anyone needs my piece, they can have it.
I'll make a motion to approve case 2023-6392, 5407 Beckner Road, Preliminary Serial Subdivision. We do this one at a time, I imagine.
One at a time.
So a motion to approve that, this case.
Second.
Can I ask if that includes the conditions of approval and technical correction?
Yes, it does include. Second.
Okay, Melissa, can we have a...
Commissioner Reland? Yes, Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you. Then is there a motion for case 2023-6391?
Motion to approve case 2023, 6491, 5407 Beckner Road, Final Serial Subdivision with technical corrections in mind, yes.
Second.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to item 10 on the agenda, Staff Communications.
Thank you, Chair Lawrence, members of the commission. I just want to give an update on some of our long-range planning efforts. As you know, we have the Land Development Code update going on. We have the assessment report on the LDC update website. We're accepting comments from the public until November 15th on that report. And then we'll be following up with Clarion after we digest those comments with a draft code to, to be reviewed as well. We also released the RFP for the General Plan Update last week, HRAE. And we held a pre-proposal conference with eligible interested applicants for that. That was last week. The RFP will be up for a total of six weeks. I think we've got about a little, over four weeks left. And then we have a selection committee that will go through interview process and make a recommendation for the consultant for the general plan update. So, yeah, very exciting.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add that the turnout for the group proposal meeting was really good. We had a lot of applicants, so that's, that's exciting.
Yeah, I've said it before, but I'm very excited about this. You have no idea how excited I am about this.
I'm sorry, Chair, I'll just, we, we also met again, because we have the two kind of working groups. We have a technical advisory working group for the Land Development Code update and a community advisory working group. We met again, I think it was this week, with the community advisory group, and they'll be meeting monthly, you know, kind of going forward to talk about, you know, issues and, and concerns and how to engage with that process. So things are moving along.
Thank you. Any matters from the commission?
I would just like to commend staff genuinely because we know how slim your group is. And you guys are doing a lot of heavy lifting for the city. And so just want to commend you for everything you're getting done in this process.
Thank you.
Nothing else? We can adjourn. Thank you all.